I was able to get it all on the two. I don't, we don't have a way to do.
Yeah, cuz that. It's too bad because that would really be a great.
I know.
For everybody, that town meeting, everything, I mean.
Yeah, well, for telling me you could probably do it. I can take it to Staples. I'm not going to town again, so.
Yeah.
But.
Because then we can. Reuse it.
Yeah.
Like those things.
Although, you know what I did, I updated by the reserve down.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some small moving. Through, right? Yeah. Corinne, I know we saw a note from Jim. He might be a little bit late. He said he till about five forty-five or something.
He said he was gonna try. He was gonna be late. Well, not early, but.
Knock on wood, we'll be.
No worries.
Moving out smartly. Okay, so we're.
Cause you lose your quorum then as soon as she leaves. Unless Jim's here.
Right? Don't worry, don't worry.
So we'll. Thank for that time.
We are, five thirty.
All right, call the meeting to order. And I'll put my glasses on. Um, thank you for joining us. So I came into the office and met with Corinne and Lisa last week sometime it was. I still didn't have a woman fuzzy about getting together with the select board and what is it we're really going to present? And ask them so that when we leave there. Or that meeting. We say, okay, got it. We got our marching orders. We know what needed to do. We'll, we'll, we'll get back to you with whatever we go. So anyway, that having been said. Um, the purpose tonight is to prepare for Thursday, which again. Ideally, we'll keep it somewhat streamlined. Um, we'll obviously ask their questions as we go through. But. And present them as succinctly as possible, some updates and. Um, the documents that we want to present to them and ask specific. Or specific decisions.
Basically, we're just trying to make sure they're all on the same page.
Yep. So I would direct your attention to, oh, I'm sorry. Or get ahead of myself here. Um, is there adjustment to the agenda at all?
No.
Any public comment? Um, okay. I think now we're. You're into the heart of. If you have this one document that starts out with meeting with the select board. So. I gathered some notes and this is because. I think this will help. To intend to kick it off with, okay, here are some general updates. And please, as you see, updates are, are edits. Lisa, this is um, on the SharePoint. If you wouldn't mind, in case we need to make any quick. Update to it. Uh, it's under, under the general folder within the SharePoint.
Okay.
Uh, first bullet, we've informed and meet monthly. Institute of the CIP Committee Rules of Procedure. Uh, we conducted the town kickoff, April tenth. Um, SharePoint set has been established. Uh, the website has been established. We established an asset and fleet inventory, appendix A. We established the facilities inventory, appendix B. We established equipment repairs and maintenance schedule, appendix C. We collected all and consolidated all the projects submissions, appendix Ds respectively. Uh, I've already fixed this one. Uh, Corinne, you probably picked up on it. We created a draft five-year capital improvement plan.
Yes.
Uh, it's already been fixed in there. Appendix E. Um, and we have a draft. Capital Improvement Budget F. Uh, we've established a CIP timeline, G. We established, uh, frequently asked questions. We know they have to be updated, but. We have established some H. We created a rank and, uh, criteria model. We're currently on target with a proposed CIP timeline and following the eleven steps of completing a capital improvement program. And then we briefed the select board on the statute requirements for the implementation of the CIP. And that was the last meeting that, uh, Corinne and I went to, uh, and Lisa was there that evening as well. Yes, ma'am.
Do we, does the select board know? Kind of think how the meeting will flow. Do they know what all these appendices? Are, have they seen them?
They've seen that they were on the last set of attachments as well. Um. But if so, we'll try to answer them as.
For their meeting. They got them all from their last meeting.
Yeah.
The whole. Well, Lisa has met with Claire.
Yep.
More involved and she requested they all be attached. And so.
I think that's good. I just know that even for me, it's in appendix A, B, C, and D took a while for me to. Get a hang of what each one was.
We'll certainly be prepared to do a quick and, uh, Q and A on those. Um, they will get. Um, E and F. Uh, A, B, C are fairly. Straightforward. The Ds, I don't think we should get to say the Ds, quite frankly, that's a roll-up and that's consolidated into E respectively. Yep. Um, and actually, uh, near the end here, uh, Angie, I have a recommended list of things that we would have for enclosures or exhibits. Uh, and those are some of those. Um. The next point I wanted to make is so that we're all in the same sheet of music. And I think we finally. Uh, when we were together last week, I think we finally got this thing nailed down. And this is, so the way this, please tell me what you think about this, because when I looked at this, the, uh. And I'm at the part where important definitions and FAQs. So that everyone in that meeting has a, 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 a general concept. When we taught program, we taught plan, or we taught budget. And so for us, we've kind of batted that around and, and the reason it got confusing was. In the literature that I've read, the source documents. They've often used pro- program and plan interchangeably. I think we can make life clear for us, still will stay within the, um. The intent of what a program is and a plan, et cetera. And by doing the following, and it says, what is a capital plan, blah, blah, blah. The last paragraph of the, excuse me, of the program. And it coordinates planning, uh, community planning, financial capacity, and physical development. What does our CIP consist of? So that, this is an important point here. North Hero CIP is composed of. Three parts. A program. A capital plan. And a capital budget. A program provides the guidance, procedures, and policies. That's that longer document that we have to do an update on it. Um, it has the full narrative and, and guidance, okay? Secondly, a plan is the community planning and fiscal management tool for five years. That is our five-year plan. That's our appendix E. And then the third piece of this is the budget, the upcoming year's planning, uh, spending plan for capital items that are presented to the legislative body for approval. That's our budget. I think if we use those three terms and we stay. Um. Consistent with those program, plan, budget. For all of us, I think it'll make it. Much more clear.
Is, um, is this going to the select board or is this just our notes?
Uh, it, it certainly can, uh, as a.
I just didn't know if we should add the capital plan as appendix E and budget is. Next to it.
So make it consistent.
Make it consistent.
Okay, so, right, yeah, actually, if you have the doc, uh, we can make a quick edit to it.
Um, just so anybody looking at it future going forward, they know.
Okay, ring.
Where we.
Ringing, yep.
Where we struggled with it, you know? I don't think we have, the program doesn't have an appendix, right?
There's, it is, no, no, because it is, it is the overarching. Yep, and we'll come, uh, come back and talk about that because we know we have to make adjustments. But it, we can't make those adjustments until we get some decisions. I've already started some of the adjustments based on the. Nomenclature. Um, to. Clean up our programs and our plans and. Here.
Good.
All that stuff.
Okay.
So. Um. Pardon?
Okay, I'm, I'm making.
Okay. Uh, so you found the dog.
I did.
Okay, perfect. Um. Then to set the stage, okay, ladies and gentlemen of select board, uh, the items we want to review with you here this evening. Um, and sleek, uh, seek a decision on. Uh, tracking and presenting of the capital improvement program. Um, review policies, procedures for enacting, um, that we'll discuss with you. And as the select board, okay. Is this go, the third one of those, I go to your email you sent me?
Yep.
Okay.
Jump into on that?
Yes, please.
So we've kind of batted around ever since we've started. How and if this is going to be voted on. Um, and I think we have come to the conclusion that logistically, the. Budget portion. For this first year would really be best suited to be incorporated in the operating budget because it basically already is. Um. And the voters would vote on the capital plan as part of, yeah, with the operating budget. Um, so that kind of led us to the discussion, you know, knowing the voters. Are waiting to see what we produce and would probably or maybe expecting something to vote on. And knowing we're going to request the select board, uh, allow us to make some edits to our program. Perhaps that be up for a vote. So I sent the question to VLCT. Um, because some things voters are not enabled by law. To act on, and this is not one of them. The, uh, and I have the question and the response if you're. It was really short and sweet. He just basically was like, nope, the statute says the select board. Enacts it. What I found really interesting and did not expect was in his response, he called out the budget as well. The legislature has vested the authority to adopt a capital budget. And program with the select board pursuant to blah, blah, blah. And that if we were to recommend that they put either before the voters, it would have to be advisory. Which in the past, we've always really shied away from. But that makes a little more sense now why we can't find a budget that has. A town that has a budget on there. Yeah, so the select board basically is saying yes or no to whatever's in the. The program for the plan and the budgets associated with it, and then for the voters to enact it. If we want any of those actual dollars in sense, they have to be part of the operating budget because that's what goes between the voters. So it's all kind of starting to come together.
Well, when you said part of the operating budget, it would still be aligned items as part of that budget. Like there's now a major capital line in the budgets.
Like for library, yeah.
So what kind of hit home for me when I met with, um, Corinne and Lisa last week was. Let's say hypothetically, library roof, right? A capital. Capital improvement to library, whatever, twenty thousand dollars. When, uh, and it goes to the call for. Stuff that goes into the. Um, in your report. I think we have three. Documents, let's call it, to put in there. One is an overall. Um. Update synopsis of where the capital improvement committee is and what we've been doing. Which a lot of it, we've got capturing the updates, we could add a little more narrative, you know, kind of like a one pager. Following that is appendix E, explain a appendix E, this is your plan, blah, 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 it's a five-year plan, blah, blah, blah. And then. Explanation of appendix, now, sorry, appendix E, we realize it's, it's voluminous and it's. We'll have to probably direct them to say for a, a better view, please go to the website. Here. And you can see it because it's just not going to be too hard to see. For what we would intend to do for the hearing and the annual meeting is have a blow up. So that people could see it. So if you're there, you can see it and, and stuff like that, but. Say, we certainly direct them to the website. And they'll be able to go look at it for the appendix E because that's the, the large one.
That all makes sense. Can, can I ask? A question on how this works and I'm.
Yep.
I'm thinking about a multi-year project. If we every year take capital budget into the voters. And, and part of that would be the, sorry, the operating budget is the voters, part of it would be a capital budget. If you have a multi-year project like the fire station. And the voters. And vote that down every year? In the middle of a project, that's what I'm still stuck on, but I guess that's it.
They can vote, they'd have to vote the whole budget down.
Correct.
And they say no to the whole budget.
Correct.
So conversely, I was just thinking, just when I just read what you just handed out, Corinne. I'm flipping.
Okay.
Could the select board? As I understand what, what this individual said, the select board. Has the authority to. Uh, adopt capital budget and program. So. What, if you separated the capital budget from the operating budget? Would it just the operating budget then go into the voters? And the capital budget wouldn't because it's already been adopted by the select board and they don't need to take it to the voters?
Though, they could adopt it, but, um, they wouldn't end up with any money to fund it. Without putting it in the operating budget because only the voters have the authority to authorize raising funds through taxes. And that's done through an operating budget.
So there's a, to me, there's a disconnect between.
Yeah. Yeah, so how do you, and, and, and it's.
It's about the Lisa's point, sorry, it goes Lisa's point. If somebody doesn't like something in the capital budget. So they're going to vote no on the entire project.
Mm-hmm. But we would know that. Why, why they voted no. They just said, no, we don't like the amount and we'd have to cut somewhere and if the project's already in place and moving, we're not going to cut it.
Yeah, if you do.
Well, it's possibly why they require two public hearings. You know, the select board adopts, but they're required by statute to have these hearings.
I see.
So, yeah, I, the problem, the hope is that you would get, you know. You don't want to see that happen. People wait till it's on the pallet and they're like, wait, what? But ideally, you'd be getting public info and feedback as you go. If you're presenting something that's. You know half your voters aren't upset about.
Or even informed about the government.
And I guess I would, just from a practical standpoint, as, as we talk about. Just explaining this, this first year to the new town is going to be a significant, I mean, it's a bad. And I can imagine the select board is thinking about, I would be thinking about, how do we do this so that it even gets? Its first step of kind of issue.
Yeah.
And not, this is, this is much more sophisticated in the sense of you're going to put everything together, but it's going to understand that there's buried in that area. In the library budget, there's twenty-five thousand dollars for basement mold.
Remediation.
But I think that's for the five-year plan. It, yeah. And it's not going to look any different to the voters than what they've already seen the past few years.
The bigger numbers.
They're going to see the bigger numbers that we're actually spending this money.
And that's what they're gonna, that's, I think.
That's where the questions are going to come from.
Where it has to decide how to, how to do, how to place that office.
So this is an annual thing. Every, it's not like once they adopt it once. It's not done. They've got to do this every year and adopt the new capital budget every year.
It's, yeah, it's a working document because there'll be changes.
Okay, so unlike, like the zoning. Right. You know, it's once and done. Mm-hmm. This is an every-year thing. Mm-hmm. So every year they adopt the program and the budget. Yeah.
So how do they think about, how do, what does the select board think about putting on the line these multi-year projects that are millions of dollars? I don't want to take the whim, it's not the whim of the voter, it is, but it is the.
I don't know.
It's, it's not a whim, it's about the continued.
What really helped me was seeing. That a spreadsheet you'd put together that's not an appendix. It, it was. The other one, that what it was actually going to cost the voters in a given year. That condensed how much we're asking the voters for each year, which is not an appendix. And it was only eighty grand. Yeah, right. The money, the, what, those lines that we are taking from the operating budget that go toward these capital improvements. It was just a one-page document over five years.
Grand funding?
It, money, or reserves, money that we've already been saving. Yeah, that's.
So it just doesn't, it's somewhere, so I guess we call that, yeah, call that out. I mean, that's an explanation to the town if they're going to have.
It's only going to cost you. Right, here, there's a whole column. Oh, where their money's coming. Yeah.
No, I, I think I was trying to get to, and I'm sorry not being very articulate, I was trying to, and it's not my, it's the select board's, I guess, calls to how they. Play this out because if I was seeing this for the first time, is it, I, I'm confused already that I've been dealing with this for a while. But if I was, so that would be a, just a major. You know, success factor for us, how we, how the select board decides to, how much they decide to, how many steps they decide to take this year and how much.
But, but just correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, I mean, I just read when you, you wrote your. You know, COA one, COA two, based on what Corinne just handed out. There's really no question. About which way to go, correct?
Um. I'd have to, I got, reread that, because when I looked at the other literature. You know, which is why I was, all along, I was saying. Well, even from my mind, is that we should separate capital from. From operating. Um. It, it, it's, you stated correctly earlier. It's a damned if you do, damned if you don't, because one could be. Could pass while the other one does not. So it's a, a damned if you do, damned if you don't. I'm, I'm. I'm more convinced now, given the. Given where we are. And for this thing to evolve. To. Put it into the operating budget and, and the, the last piece I failed to mention is that. Either with a, a parenthetical, so let's, let's use the, the library. Okay, so library's got a twenty thousand dollar capital project, roof replacement. Parenthetical right behind it, see, uh, page sixty-three. Um.
Twelve thousand grand.
The, uh, the annual, the annual capital budget, and it's one of those lines. Right, so that, there's that connectivity, like, okay, that's capital, that's. That's capital, you know, now, let's go to the Parks and Rec, that, there's a capital line. See page sixty-three.
Yep.
Annual capital budget. It's priority number four of the town, number one of Parks and Recreation, and it's, you know, whatever it is. And so you can, you can connect the dots between. Here is the capital budget for the year, for the town. And, but here's how we accounted for.
Embedded in the operating.
Yeah, so if we show that connectivity. Um, and we ex, like, explain that kind of in the. The cover to the annual report or, you know, in that part of it. I do, uh, thanks for bringing that up because that, that one document, I don't know what's titled. Um.
What are you talking about?
Uh, about the Gesundtes, meaning.
That's a.
No, no, Lisa's calculation that shows we're eighty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Is that just your fiscal slide?
Yeah.
I, what?
And so access to this, we all in town, in the town report and people could.
And on the website. We'll have it on the website, yeah.
I'm wondering that, if that one document. Because.
Might be a good thing for the town report.
Because. Appendix F. Will show, okay, that's a hundred percent reserves for the library. You know, and I think this is. Still sample rate, maybe it's not in the short. Uh, then we got the water storage. Which is ten percent reserves, fifty percent grants, forty percent debt, et cetera, et cetera. What if? Just throwing out on that. What if there's an additional column? Um, amount sourced from taxpayer or something like that? Because that's really the bottom, that's what people care about, right? What are you, what are you going to tax me on?
That can be confusing. Because.
Probably, yeah, I'm not trying to.
I'm going to bring up that. Um, it's. Because. A lot, a lot of it, the reserve money was sort, well, the reserve money. Could have come from the taxpayers. Over years.
Correct, right.
So. The document that I have. Is what we are asking the taxpayers for in a given year. But the library reserves has also got a hundred grand grants in there. Well, that. What's that? You guys have received two fifty thousand dollar donations and it's.
But therefore, they're earmarked for. Yeah.
For capital.
Yeah, one of them is a big, one, no, one of them earmarked for the building.
Exactly, so you've got library basement ceiling on here.
As a reserve, that's, I was just going to ask that question, is that?
Yeah, so, that's, that's. How do you break out, like, when you start pooling money?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell our, I wouldn't tell our donor who would, especially a donor for bigger money to say, you're ever going to spend it on suck out the water in the lot and then. No offense.
A little bit maybe.
They're, they're looking for something above that.
It's visible. I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I get there's some customer relations that has to happen, but she didn't find it. Like, I called and asked her, or, and she didn't request it to be in fine, so, and they went into.
That's, that's something different than.
Well, we should have a side conversation.
Yeah, it wasn't, I didn't hear it, but.
Yeah.
Some other people had the conversation like that.
Yeah, we'll have a side conversation. I'll explain to you what happened.
Okay, great.
But the ultimate point is a hundred percent reserves, there's been multiple things that went into.
Over the years.
Yeah. Some of its surpluses that were, some of its donations, yep.
I guess at the end of the day, our question would be. What's the dollar amount of the percent increase year over year that's related to? New money that the town was putting forward. Putting out for our, um, appropriating.
That's that.
Exactly.
That's what we're asking for.
Capital funds.
Is it the bottom of that reason?
Yeah, I'm trying, trying to move this down.
Now I'm only saying, I only know a little bit about the library than the other sites, but for every grant we submit, there'll be another one in January that we have a possibility for. They want. Percent they want a commitment from. The library. That addition can come off, we can get that grant.
So. That's for the highway. Forty-five thousand, general fund forty-four. The enterprise fund is coming from user fees, so that's not coming from tax dollars.
So, so let me ask, how did, I'm, give me.
I'm going to take your addition out. I took the addition out on the other ones, but I didn't take it.
How do we determine that it all comes from reserves when the reserves, well, the reserves are total of eighty thousand, I guess, but you have. We've, we've taken every, every possible. We've used it all, and the only thing that we know for sure is the basement ceiling is twenty-five-five. Everything else is.
Is a guess.
Is a guess, yes. That's just, I mean, it's just, if, if I were looking, because I have a long memory and I'll go, what? I said, that's a reserve. Right? But in two years, the carpet replacement, maybe. Twenty-seven thousand, the painting maybe, I haven't, I have no idea. I just, I work, anyway.
We'll figure it out.
I know. I don't want the town to go broke because the library has to, like, you know, fix their concrete or something. That's what I'm thinking about.
We're going to go see in, in my experience, the town budgets. Even in the state budget, is that there's, uh, like a summary that. You know, this budget represents, I'm making this up. Two-point-one percent increase over last year's budget, which represents. One percent increase in the property tax rate or whatever, the numbers are. But something is simple as that. Um, and if, and if there's a way to even break out. So you have a total for the whole budget of the operating and capital, that's three percent or whatever. And then if, if, if you wanted to parse that out between operating and capital. If that could be done as well, just put information out so someone could see that.
I, I think, you know, where we're at is a very unique position where we're creating. A plan. When there has been decades of planning already happening. And so for the first time ever, we have a document that shows it. I mean, this is kind of what got Terry involved, is that town meetings, like. With voters saying, you have a million dollars, why are you paying down my taxes? And we're, we're going to build a garage, we're going to build a garage, really, and then later we're having to build a garage. But now. Now we have a document at least that says that, like, you know, it's kind of a promise to the voter, this is the plan. If this select board adopts this on record. You know, there is a legitimate place, a reason, way for them to be saving that. But, so we're in a weird position where we're having to document what already happened. So that, I hear what you're saying, I'm not quite sure how we.
Do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, maybe this, maybe it's like next year where we can compare what we did this year to next year.
So the big, they have a better base here.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm. So under the twenty, or column D. Which is twenty-five. Does that add up at the bottom? Like, or the one ninety-three or one ninety-seven or whatever that number was?
Yeah, when you add in the water.
Okay, so those are all capital improvements in twenty-five. Right?
One seventy-three.
Yes.
That's money. So eighty-four, one twenty-five is what's budgeted to go into the reserve fund for the water department.
Right, so all of these.
Column D, yeah.
Everything in A. The titles.
Mm-hmm.
Are counted for in D for twenty-five. So the capital improvements for twenty-five, right?
So, no. So. Column C is all the, the list of projects that we have in the five-year plan.
Hmm.
And. Column D, E, F, and G, and H are what is budgeted to go towards. Those projects. From the, from the taxpayers.
Right.
We're only budgeting for one year, which is. At this point, it's a fight.
Right. Right, okay, so I'm, I'm sorry, because I saw that line thirteen as an example has a zero, which is fine, so under twenty five, we're not obligating any. So, okay, so anything that has a zero. Or right now, fire station, community hall, listers. Sander. And I don't know what else is below. Those are fiscal twenty five. Annual. Capital.
Are we currently in fiscal twenty five?
We are.
Yeah, so that's, so, okay, that's, that's fun, that's charming. We're really talking about what the select board is gonna do.
I'm sorry, okay, twenty, okay, so let's roll forward one, one year. Um, so under the seventy nine thousand dollars. So under twenty six. We have the Sander, no, I'm sorry, we don't, we have the fire station, community hall, listers. And whatever else, Stanley.
It's just those, the total seventy nine, there's nothing below it.
So. Shouldn't what's in that column marry up to what's on F? For that correlation, I'm trying to correlate between.
No, conversely, we have capital, we'll be raising capital funds and other line items that aren't on F. Like we talked about how the community hall has a fifty year plan. And so every year there's gonna be twenty grand going to their capital reserves, just because they know in fifty years they're gonna need a roof, so they're already saving for it.
Right.
So, this is one of the things we're struggling with is we have this annual. And it doesn't quite reflect exactly what's in the budget.
Right.
It just doesn't, like, I don't know that we can make it.
Well, I mean. Yours, there's gonna be a line in the operating budget that says twenty thousand dollars using this example. For, I forget if it was a, they used as an example for here, but, right, whatever that item is. So it's in operating budget. And so if we're saying, see paid sixty three for the annual. Okay, now I can see twenty thousand dollars for feature, you know, for. Reserves for the community hall. Ceiling or roof. See what I'm saying, it's like, there's that correlation.
You know, their plan's fifty years and ours is five years, so they're technically raising funds. For things that aren't gonna be.
Right, but they're appropriating some of it in a given year, correct?
Yeah, but I'm just trying to make the point that it's not really gonna be possible to make that. Completely sync up with what funds we're gonna be asking the voters to pay for in the operating budget. And I, I think we might be getting stuck on that, like, I don't think we should be thinking this has to reflect what's in this. This is a planning document, I didn't realize that when we started and it's been a hard road to get there. But we're just doing a planning document, we're not budgeting at all, right? It's.
But isn't that your budget document?
Uh, no, because it's like grants and reserves and debt and.
It's what we're spending.
Yeah.
In fiscal year twenty five. F is what we are expensing in fiscal year twenty five.
Would this document that's on the screen now be in front of the voters in any way?
Well, not if it's gonna be confusing, this is what we are asked, this is the money coming from the operating budget going towards capital improvement. Not necessarily what's on F or even E, because. The, the roof for this place is twenty years out, it's money we are saving. For capital improvements at some point in the future.
This was a turning point for me though, when Lisa put this together, I went like.
Cause this is what's gonna, we are asking. The voters for. Each year, that's gonna be coming out of that operating budget.
Right, but we don't. Know.
Well, it could change, so if you want the entry, the carpets. To come out of the operating budget, then we're gonna take money out, that has to be budgeted in fiscal year twenty six or twenty seven. And it's not gonna come out of your reserves, but right now. You haven't budgeted any, any money for it, so it's gotta come out of the reserves.
I, 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 I get, I get that, I don't know that the community.
Is gonna get that, yeah.
Cause we're struggling with it, I don't think we should either, it's great, it's great improvement, it's excellent.
I think it's a working document.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's amazing.
It's a great, I mean, it's not to diminish the, the value of it, but it's.
So I think our approach actually needs to be like. We don't have anything to do with budget, we could care less what you do with the budget, this is our recommendations, and if this left board looks at this and goes. Oh, we're negative eighty dollars, maybe we should look at tweaking so we're raised enough. To meet that gap by this time, and it's up to them to do the budgeting.
I mean, that, that, that's what goes right to me, this is, this is really a great document, but it is behind the scenes, it's the technical detail that you need to make. This left wanting to make decisions. If I was a, if I was a community member, everybody, what, what? What, 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 why, why? We're not gonna have any, we're not gonna have any, any taxes raised.
When I look at F, I'm like, that's all we've got going on this year?
Yeah, yeah. All, it's like two million dollars.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's water, there's fire station.
We could, we could take a bunch of other projects and they go.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I don't mean it.
Dollars, right, but they thought spread it out because they wanted to be a.
Because usually with that, you're saying, this is what I'm asking you of the taxpayer. To help with this year.
And that should be that?
In my opinion, yes.
Cause that's what I thought, and you told me, no.
I did.
You said it's what we. That's what we expense in a year.
Happens when you use the all we did for science.
So, this, the other document. Is what we're asking that of the taxpayers in a given year.
Well, on a five year projection.
But this is.
Right.
Internal plan.
And then F was what we are spending, which is I thought what our budget was.
Well, okay, let's use the basement ceiling. Twenty five grand.
Yep.
The recommended source of funding is a hundred percent reserve, so we're saying. That tells, it's nothing coming out of the tax, it's not a tax levy.
It feels more like a document that I can understand.
Right now. I mean, from the layman looking at that.
It's not gonna cost the taxpayer.
It's not gonna cost the taxpayers anything. Is that true?
That is true. It's all money we've already saved.
So, and I, again.
Well, except for the debt, but they have to approve that separately.
It's gonna be approved separately, that's, that's technically the new money that.
That's the new money that will cost the taxpayers.
Exactly.
Right, and they're gonna wanna, okay, what does that mean to me?
Yes.
But those are gonna, are those gonna be separate articles?
Uh, the fire station has to go to, on a whole separate vote.
Is that a bond?
It's bond vote, yeah.
And what about the forty percent debt for the water storage thing?
We've already received that approval from the. Voters, we had the vote, bond vote last year.
Okay, so that's, that's, so the only new money that is the fire station?
Yes, we've not, the voters have not approved yet.
Okay, and that's gonna be a separate item anyway.
Yes.
This is all made.
In January, did I tell you that? In January, they wanna do that.
No, I did not hear that.
So of all the appendix D things that we collected.
So there, so. I did a full. These are all the appendix D's we collected.
Right.
Okay, and then you said F should be just annual.
Yes.
So I went and did it by year, so this is what's happening in fiscal year twenty five. I've got, this is gonna be, oh, see. It's in the way. Do you get it? This is twenty six.
Apologize, can you go back to your first tab? So those other projects. And I don't know what's not out, out there. Like the waterline replacement, is that? Not next year, it's two years down the road?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Lisa, can you go to this, uh, twenty twenty five annual budget tab, please? But let me make sure I understood, because we're, what we're creating now is for twenty six, right?
Correct.
But the fire station is on. The twenty five tab, should that be on the twenty six?
They're hoping to break ground in the spring.
No, but, but that hasn't been approved yet, right?
Correct. But they.
Special vote in January though, or.
And they wanna break ground in the spring, which is fiscal year twenty five, so that's happening.
So, I'm sorry, did you say they're calling a special vote?
But it sounds like.
Okay.
Before the town meeting in March, yes.
Okay, I'm confused, thank you.
Yes.
And I don't think the library has a. At the, we, I think the contractor's been told it wouldn't happen until the twenty, until twenty seventh of next summer.
For.
Only thing on the basement ceiling.
Or the basement ceiling.
But, you know.
So that's gonna get moved to twenty twenty six.
It's all reserve funding, it probably doesn't matter. I don't mean to say the bad word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that one is. Almost in the rearview mirror, for lack of a better term.
So maybe we need to add a column, is that what you said, add a column to this? Taxpayer. I don't know, we can, we can call it approved, a taxpayer.
Assessment or.
Whatever, whatever's gonna. Taxes to the taxpayer.
I have to think about.
Some, or some.
Yeah.
Costs to the taxpayer.
Additional cost to the taxpayer. Or.
Taxpayer cost.
Taxpayer cost or.
Well, not raised by tax, that you could say taxes.
Raised, yeah.
You just say raised in the same word as tax.
I think the, you could put a footnote, that means, uh, like, um. Well, it's confusing because. The fire station is not yet approved, so maybe there just needs to be a footnote on that one, saying.
Approval bond vote coming.
Coming in, in fiscal twenty five.
Yes, as, as someone was walking, maybe go to a lot of meetings.
Yeah, but, and then, I think to get to the other point, then somehow maybe there's be two columns or two footnotes that the, um. The only two items that are. Taxpayer supported are like two debt items. One's already there, three, one is there. As of today.
So are we presenting? This is the twenty five, which we're in right as we speak, which would have been voted on last. March. But it wasn't like that fire station.
Well, I mean, this is why this document. Is really just supposed to be for planning, because it doesn't tell us where the funds are coming from in that perspective. I mean. Because you can have a special vote to do debt at any time, it's not gonna follow. The pattern that the operating budget does.
Is the fire station the only?
No, when the water tank, when they, they blew that in October, didn't follow, it doesn't, you know, because they can call a special vote whenever they want.
Can you go back to FY twenty six, please, Lisa? That's really from a budgetary perspective. As it applies to the March vote, correct?
Twenty six, yes.
Yes.
Yes, what we're looking at for next year, and again, that's all coming from reserves and grants, that's.
Right, so there's no.
No additional.
Be important point to make.
Yeah.
But the capital projects. That are on this, FY twenty six. Are, there's no additional cost to the tax.
Here's my, my caution, I missed the moving. The, the only, the only, this is small potatoes, but the only. In hand, actual. Quote for work that we have that's solid in the library. Is what we thought was in the next year's budget that was gonna be voted on in March, which is the basement. Ceiling and mold remediation. The carpet replacement. Was a, not a back of an envelope, but it was call those, see what a percentage, you know, what, how much it costs per square foot, and you know, do it that way. So, I, I would be, I, I would be remiss to say that if I was asking the taxpayer for ten thousand dollars, that we have that as an actual number.
But you're not asking them for it.
No, but if it's, it's, it's.
Well, it says a hundred percent reserves, so that means it's kind of your capital.
Well, it depends on how much everything, it's twenty, we have.
So this is why we do this.
By the end of, by the end of, by the end of the projects, there won't be any reserves left.
Right, so. Yeah, so this is where, you have to go back to the library and be like, okay, we gotta start having a capital reserve. In our operating budget every year, we gotta start saving ten grand based on these five things. And if we spend, save ten grand for five years, we'll have enough to do this.
Right, but the whole budget is seventy thousand dollars. Including, including.
Well, that's, so this is where you're, the library board is thinking. We have this much money, what can we get done? What they need to think is, these are our projects. That have to get done to keep the building maintained, how are we gonna pay for it? And then you look at your reserves and then you determine are there grants, and then you're like, okay.
I think they have been holding the, the reserves to apply to the addition.
Right.
To the grant, because it was a hundred thousand plus that was needed to cover that, we, we asked.
The in kind?
We asked for less than what we, what the quote was, because we had that money, so it's a whole, and, and we'll go back to the library, but it's a whole rethinking of how that board. Thinks about the. Management of the. Building as opposed to the management of the programs and.
So I think this is where this group is gonna land, is we're gonna end up being more of a liaison to each of these boards to help them navigate through capital planning. Rather than dealing with budgets and operations.
That's not our job, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're, we're all sitting here learning. How this is supposed to look, so that we can then go and tell the library, okay. You know, to really make this work and to really start saving for your projects, we actually need you to think this. And we're, we're still wrapping our heads around it.
But it still requires a vote by the, by the town to garner those increases in some way.
In some way.
We never knew there's already a capital vote built into the, into the library budget because of five thousand dollar donation line that goes into the operating budget. We say we're gonna raise five thousand donations, but.
That goes into the operator, yeah.
But that's not.
I mean, but I'm thinking.
Taxpayer money.
No, no, it isn't, but. It's, it's part of that, what, how we raise funds.
I understand, I think that for this.
I'm just trying to think about.
Twenty six. I think this is the document we put out, if anything.
Can I ask a question? So. In that we realize we're evolving. So from the taxpayer. I, I would like, okay. What is it you're expecting, what are our capital projects for twenty six? However, ladies and gentlemen, if you look down at these lines, we have two carryovers from last year, because we're, it's gonna take a while for us to, because.
I agree, I think you gotta show them twenty five too.
Because if, if we don't, we say, well, why are you, is there a, why is there a line item?
What happens?
For a million dollar bond, or whatever that is, well, whatever that number was. Right, why is, isn't that a capital project? Why isn't that list, why haven't you shown me that as? A requirement, and I think it's okay to explain, these two lines are carryover from twenty five, because we had to start somewhere. And so, that, we want, you need to see this because. You see it as a, an article. For, you know, whatever the number is, million dollars for the fire station. And whatever that other line was, maybe it's for the water.
You said the other ones already approved, and I told them.
For the water, yeah.
But this is a transition year, and I believe, I think we need to show them. What's in process and what. What they're gonna vote up for the following year.
It goes to explaining why we have all this money. I mean, just in twenty five, we're gonna spend, you know, two point eight million dollars of.
Money, there's a lot of questions already, but what happened, what, I mean, I hear it all the time, what?
Yeah, so those. On G, those have all been committed, except for. Line six, we're asking you the taxpayer. For dollars.
But not. But not as part of the twenty six budget.
No, but as a single line is a.
But it probably won't be on the March line. Like, cause they'll probably do it by special election, which is. What they, exactly, which is why I'm, the more we talk about this, the more I'm like, we don't get into, we, we present it to them and they figure it out. We're gonna go insane if we try and. I, yeah, yeah, exactly.
So you said the fire station bond is left up to the select board?
Oh, yeah, well, the voters have to approve it, but they can put it forward in January, February.
Whenever they want to.
You know, it might not, i- if it's not ready in March, if they put it out to bid and there's an issue, they could bring it back in July. So it won't be on the March ballot necessarily. So we're trying to present something to the voters to go and sync with the operating budget. We can't assume that that million dollar will end and is gonna be on the March ballot.
But it could be.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's a select board decision.
It's a select board decision.
I think we could just present the information, Terry, to the select board saying. Here's our twenty six budget, if you have the twenty six tab, here's twenty six, we're aware that there's this other outlier that. And it's up to you, select board, how to figure out how you're gonna. Present that, or what you're gonna do with it, but FYI, this is out there. I'm sure they know it's out there, they're.
Right. Okay, uh, cause I'm trying to understand it as a. Taxpayer, what are you asking me to pay for taxes?
Well, our goal when we started was a single document that would. If the voters would vote on, it would be really clear, they'd all be like, yay, I get it. And it's not happening.
Still not there.
I know, it's.
Yeah, okay. So that's a question, that's a kind of a talk through on Thursday night.
What, when, how it's funded is. And, and also it's.
So I guess our, our wording on the. Town report of what we put in there. Really has to be kind of carefully crafted. To, to try to eliminate confusion as, as much as. Okay. Um, okay. So. Sorry, jumping back to where we were on page two, which was under items to review, that whole thing about those select board wanna blah, 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 that's a scratch, check?[1708.88]
Yeah, so getting rid of that third bullet.
Yep. And then voter approval for the community fund articles is the last one, which I think is still valid, we'll come back and talk about that.
Yes.
Uh, where it says next steps for the CIP. I've made myself a note, I recommend we move that to the end of this document. Um, I agree. It's, I just, I was just capturing, we do need to come back and just talk about those dates real quick. We'll go into the next page, under tracking and presenting the capital improvement program. There are two COAs. Uh, we kind of wordsmith these a little bit. The bottom line is, uh, direct your attention to the, almost the last pair of that page, based on all that we've said. Recommendation of CIP, and now I'm asking for your. Feedback, concurrents, non-concurrents. COA one is it will be much easier and less confusing to voters, as well as the department's board's commissions and the select board, which could be revisited down the road, but is the best option at this time.
Yeah, you lost me here.
Which was incorporate, which is COA one, which is incorporated, uh, capital, incorporated into the operating budget.
Oh, okay, there's choices.
I'm sorry.
So, okay, there are two options, COA one and COA two.
Yeah, I'm sorry, COA, common vernacular. Course of action. Sorry, course of action. Um, and so the first one is incorporating into the operating budget, which Corinne.
Well, now that we've gotten this finding from BLCT, I don't know that we can do two.
I don't, I, that's my comment earlier, I don't think. This is even a question. I don't think we, I don't think it's a recommendation. Based on that response that the select board has a sole authority for the capital. Plan and the, and the budget. It doesn't have to go to the voters.
They, they, they know all about this.
No.
Okay, then I don't wanna be the one that brings it up to them. I mean, you don't wanna hit them off, you know, outside of the head in a public.
Yeah, I didn't bring that copy, I should re, I need to reread that.
One of the things I was most surprised to learn in this job. Is that voters do not have the authority on everything. They just don't, I mean, the democracy, you assume you put it on a ballot. If the voters vote yes, it's yes, if they vote no, it's no, but. If this law doesn't give the voters the authority to make that decision, it doesn't mean any.
Well, Terry, if you go under the COA two, the second bullet, voters can vote on the capital budget independently.
Um, yep, okay, so. Maybe we just completely root, scratch. COA, so it, and just put in recommendation, uh. Recommend, you know, leave it as recommendation, approve. Um, incorporating in. The.
We recommend the capital budget be incorporated.
Into operating.
Operating budgets.
Yeah.
It is, is that our job to tell them where and how to. I mean, I don't wanna.
In the future, I would say no, but I think this year, that's what they're looking to us for, they're wanting us to wade through all of these statutes and BLCT and. Say this is how you do it the first year.
We're gonna scratch. All of COA one and COA two. And then go, just start out with a recommendation. Of the committee.
Yep.
Which we'll read.
Recommendations.
Uh, approve. The capital budget. Be incorporated. Into the operating budget. Continuation as, as it will, blah, blah, blah.
Cause it will be much easier and less confusing to the voter.
And done. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
And this is capital as opposed to what capital may be, I'm asking, maybe necessary. Capital in the operating budget should be a, a line item, right, there's so much capital you get to build in the building. Then an operating budget as well, there may be, there could be operating costs and running that new building, which aren't part of the capital, right? That's.
It's gonna be part of the operating.
Right, but as it's all part of the operating budget, we're gonna have a specific line item for the capital.
Or, yeah, says capital roof, roof replacement, whatever.
Cause it's in there now, I just wanna make sure.
So this next line says decide how that will be voted on. We don't need that at all either, right? That's a scratch. So we can take that para out. And then we're into review policies and procedures, um, here, I think we can go through this fairly quickly. Uh, at least I, um, capital plan and budget policy. So, I, is it, is incorporated into the program, because the program's the guidance, the written guide. Um. I recommend removing the next.
Right, based on the.
The whole thing that's, uh, I'll check with BLCT, so we're, that's all going.
Um. Yeah, if, if you go over the three dots on the right hand side, I think you can delete. Cut my thread, yep. Or remove, leader remover. So the next para. Um. The gist of this, I'll explain it really quick. Is they have approved the contingency. Reserve fund. And the capital reserve fund last. Uh, March, however, there were no funds to support those. In the way we've got our reserve funds and we're recommending not creating any or deleting or abolishing any funds. Right now, there's no need to create, to pull dollars into a reserve fund. So what we're recommending. Is. Select board already approved the contingency, uh, reserve and the capital reserve. Whatever date, insert date. However, given the recommendation, I don't know. We can get, we can get rid of the given the recommendation, we can just scratch that part of it. There is no pressing need to establish a new centralized. Capital reserve fund. Um, the voters need to approve creation of the contingency reserve fund, we don't. Have. Money for that, right?
So we have the policy, but the policy doesn't have anything to govern. A fund can't be created without voters enabling it.
Now, do we need, uh, for clarity, is it creation of that fund or? Funding of it, I mean, is the. Creation and funding, okay.
Yeah, like last year.
Do you approve creation and funding or?
Approve the creation of an MBRC fund that will be funded with such amount of funds from this source.
Yep. So we'd need to, after creation. And. Um, and. And funding or populating or whatever. Currently, we have the approved policy with no funds to use the policy to oversee, so we're creating policy, we're creating funds, okay. Uh, because reserve funding requires vote, and their, their decision must be made by the end of December. Um, my next one, I recommend, second one, we're relying on, yeah, I like, recommend removing that bullet or that line. Uh, recommendations. From the CIP, okay, current contingency reserve fund policy states shall be funded at no more than ten percent. The LCT recommends.
I think they said fifteen. And other towns have said twenty.
And other people have said twenty.
Continuously fund to decline it at no more than ten percent.
I'll, I'll check that again and see what. You know, I don't think this is something that has to be decided before Thursday. Like, we're gonna be going into so much with the select board on Thursday. If we come back to them, you know, we have until the end of December to make sure this gets on the morning. This might be.
Excuse me, uh, yeah, I mean, at least if we have it, we can, we get there, we can knock it out, but. Um. Because.
What does that mean, the contingency reserve fund, it no more than less than twenty percent?
Twenty percent of the operating budget or fifteen percent of the operating budget or twenty percent.
But. It was, um, did we already, are we ready to, are we ready to point this out here?
Well, no.
It currently says ten.
Yeah.
We need to skip from this.
And it might be nice to have Frank and Jim here too.
But it currently says ten.
Yeah.
And, and the one that they signed last.
What is the current operating budget total?
Over a million.
Just over a million? So that'd be a hundred thousand dollars, ten percent would be a hundred thousand dollars. All right, we've, I, I probably require some calculations to select boards, compared what they think, and it's, I can see some people saying no more than ten.
Right, well, the bailout, as Corinne pointed out to me, the bailout is if something happens is you have to dip into the surplus.
Right.
But that's the reason you create the contingency, so you don't. Eventually, the surplus is gonna be spent on buildings.
Lisa has learned that we're not really supposed to have these surpluses.
Right.
So we, as, we're, we're trying to reckon, we're learning that stuff and recommending to the select board. We do certain things that maybe perhaps in the future, we wouldn't recommend when operating, uh, budgeting standpoint. But that to get started and make sure the stuff all ties together. That there is a contingency fund that has enough funds to cover what we need in an emergency. Cause eventually there shouldn't be any surplus.
By law, the surplus should go back to the voters, right?
But a contingency, if they don't, if we do that, then it's set there, so you've got your rainy day.
But that's why the voters have to approve it.
Right.
We're creating a process, just have a rainy day.
Maybe introduce this, but don't get into detail.
I mean, this is pretty minor, but it was one of those quick things that we could, we could. Do with it, um, that next para, I, again, I recommend deleting that.
Change this language to read that one?
No, no, no.
No, uh, we'll, we'll balance. Other points, no accounts will be, uh, no accounts will be created with the exception of the contingency reserve fund if, by the voters. Uh, no accounts will be abolished, nor will there be any additional consolidation of accounts. They, they stay the same. Uh. And then exhibits are read aheads, um, for the meeting. I was recommending. The capital improvement program, um, draft. Maybe one of them. I made changes. To incorporate the language of the three. Part program. Meaning, program, plan, whatever. That is in our folder. Uh, dated last week. Six days ago, whatever it was, um, so if we wanna have one copy of that, I don't think we need multiple copies of that. Uh, of the program. You know, one time, all right, that one, that's picture of the town hall on it. Or the community hall. So I, and please at your leisure, take a look at it and make sure I follow my. Programs and plans and whatever, right?
So, is the idea we're gonna, this document we're just going over is gonna go to the select board alternative, right?
Um, however. When I come back to our, our, our requirements. Is we can't fix that, ladies and gentlemen, until we get some decisions from you. Then we have to go back and make some.
Right, that's, my concern is, please, they need to back up to the PC, please. Where, where that has changed the language to read, where did that twenty, where the words in quotes, the contingency reserve shall be funded at no less than twenty percent? Where did that twenty percent come from?
Uh, that's a proposal based on. Feedback from other towns and whatnot.
Right, but go up again a couple more lines.
I think.
I think the current. He recommends fifteen percent, I think you said. Whatever they said I think should go there, and then other towns have said, said it at twenty percent.
Yeah, whatever those numbers are, whatever those numbers are.
Change the sign which should be the contingency reserve shall be funded at no less than to be determined percent. Because I, I don't, we haven't had that.
Like practice and then, yeah.
But I would put the other percentages up there for the fifteen and the twenty, if that's what they are.
I know, I'll confirm it. Yeah.
And same with the TBD.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause I don't wanna. That would look like.
Yep, yep. I, I, I threw that number based on what we had talked about, yep. Um. Okay, uh. So for exhibits. Uh, just one of those, I don't think we need to. Have any more than that, the five year plan, which. For this one, we'll have one. Um, hard. And, but down the road, it'd be nice if we had a much larger one for the. Like hearings or, or what have you, um. The, the one five year, or the budget. A larger CIP timeline, because we'll have to go back and kind of. Throw darts on that. And then the contingency reserve fund policy, again, whether we spend time on that or not. But at least we got it at the ready.
Do we ask the select board what? When do they tell us what, what they think our job should be for the remainder of the year to prepare them for this next? Vote. I guess that's my, if I had one question, that would be it. What else, what do you, you know?
Yeah, what else do you need or?
How much of what we're doing is. Yeah. Right. I really wanna find out some of that to find.
And the last part of that document, which. Uh, if we didn't catch it early, we'll grab it from the, where it says next steps for the CIP committee.
Still trapped.
Pardon? I do, I'm just trying to.
It was on the bomber page two.
I'm, I'm just trying to keep us rolling, so.
That's terrific, you can remember all this stuff.
Uh, it's a little bit below that, right there, grab that whole section, please.
Next step.
And that'll be in the last.
You want it down to the bottom?
Yep.
Take out that space, yeah.
Actually, sorry. My mistake. The appendices are more kind of nice to know. Right before the, uh, exhibits and read aheads. Yeah, right in there, so. So these are some things that I captured. That we're gonna tell them, we know we have to do. Um. Implement decisions from you, uh, the capital program needs to be updated. And we have to put into whatever that data is. Um, from our timeline. Cause we owe you that. We owe you. The five year plan. By date X, again. I think they're November, but. Um, the capital budget also date X.
It looks like it's all the second, final presentation of CIP to select board is the second meeting in November.
Okay. So those dates will all be the same November, whatever it is.
Eighteenth.
And then while Lisa's typing, draft the CIP update and introduction of the CIP documents. For the town of North Hero.
I mean, it has. The second meeting in October, CIP presentation to select board. Which is why we're rushing and having fellow meetings to speak, is so we can actually make sure they understand it before we formally submit it to them. And then informal public meeting. First week of November, yeah. So we're looking at. That's what's on the timeline, what did I put in the, um. So we're looking at the twenty first of October?
It's next, it's next week.
Mm-hmm. Because we wanted to make sure they understood it, we didn't wanna just like. Yeah, like twenty pa, here's twenty pages of the documents, this is our recommendation, and walk out the room, cause, you know, hopefully. Yeah.
Cause the first informational meeting is scheduled for, well, first of November.
Yeah, let me pull up, um, I'm trying to remember what document it was I created where I had sat down with. Our calendar now that we're more into this and come up with. Cause I didn't compare it to this yet, it's gonna need more time.
That's what I think, it's just a guess. Okay, the annual report is due December twentieth, that is out.
Okay.
So, more low. Take all these, uh.
Okay. Um, yeah, it says the SB schedules a public hearing for the November fourth meeting.
But is that, that's their, their timeline or ours?
It's theirs, but they're not gonna wanna schedule a meeting for something that they haven't been presented with and.
Right.
Cause I think that our last meeting, we started talking about this and we were like, you know, we should try and meet the timeline.
Right.
Even, but be aware that they might not want to do this, but this is why we're having two meetings and talking, we're just trying to stick with our timeline.
I see. I guess that's a question for them.
Exactly.
How they feel on Thursday. When do you wanna, how do you wanna move forward with it? Cause it feels really, not for us as much as for them.
I mean, I sat down with the statutes where it was like fifteen days for this and fifteen days for that, and, and it, that, this is the timeline, Mark. So.
Um, so, but those dates were. Just leave them as they are up there right now.
Yeah, for the November.
Okay.
We'll just leave them like that in order to get. Does that fit the time? Um, the first hearing has to be November fourth, according to this, you know, looking at this and wanting to like redo my math, but. Um. SB schedules a public hearing at their November fourth meeting. Cause the statutes required two public hearings, so there's an initial one with the draft. And then you distribute. What you come out of that meeting with to the planning commission, and then I have to have a certain amount of time to review it and get back to you, and then you have to warn it again. And each of these warnings requires fifteen days.
So this is all.
Yeah.
Backwards from March.
Uh, yes.
Speak.
Maybe, so, the, the, well, I had put the second public hearing for December second, and that could be pushed out, but my thought process was. We're gonna lose people's attention as we near the holiday and people aren't gonna want extra meetings. Um. And it has to be, this all really has to be wrapped up by the end of December to get on them. January.
Okay, thank you.
So all the decisions also, go back to what you said, the select board had their. November second meeting has to set this.
November, uh, I have on here that November fourth needs to be their first public hearing.
The fourth needs to be.
The first, cause there has to be two, so the first one should happen the fourth.
And then a month later.
And then the second one would be November second.
Which means we need to turn this stuff around. Will we need to present it to them on the twenty-first, or is that what we're doing Thursday?
Uh, the twenty-first, I think, would be kind of the official, like in their minutes, part of the budget discussion. Thursday is to make sure they understand it, because their meeting on Monday, we're not gonna get more than ten or fifteen minutes. Um, but if we really go into it in depth with them on Thursday and everybody does walk away understanding it, in the future, we should just be able to submit this.
So, Corinne, there, there was two requirements for hearings, not just one?
Correct. I mean, I have the statute, I can pull it up again. Cause of the planning, so you have an informal public hearing, you get input from the public, you make any changes, you send it to the planning commission. Planning commission has a certain amount of time to give you feedback. Then you have another public hearing, so the public knows what the planning commission wants. And then the select board promptly adopts or refuses it.
Okay.
And that gives them time to kind of work. That's another reason why I thought December second, well, they may want to incorporate some of this stuff. We had a lot of discussion into the budget, it only gives them one more meeting to do it. We may want to adjust our timeline.
For next, next year, we want to back it up.
So we're planning the planning commission part at their November meeting.
Yes.
They may, so.
So, did you, do, do, and then we could put, we, I suppose we can put the number eighteen on the facts, too, just.
Yeah, I have said the PC meets November twenty-sixth, so I did think to that.
This document was mainly, was meant for us to help guide our discussion, should we send this as a read ahead? As part of it, or just?
Need to add to the select board?
Yeah.
I think.
We just use this as our.
No, I think it'd be helpful, I mean, if I was stuck, just that first page, that bullet list of all the things that we did or established, I think that's helpful for them, background information.
Okay.
And we may not have to go into.
Cause then you have to go into.
Yeah, have some kind of background, some kind, yeah.
There was a comment at the very tail end of that, that we just gotta delete then.
Read, the read aheads.
Yeah, in the read ahead section, very last page, it said, uh, um, to be reviewed on October, or Tuesday, October fifteenth, we can get rid of that.
The whole thing?
Parenthetical part.
That what you want?
Yep.
I'm gonna ask a hypothetical again, only because I'm thinking about the select board of this being a transition year and the fact that we are scrunched for significant time. This appendix F, the annual capital budget, I always thought, just that was gonna be the first year, the twenty-five, twenty-six kind of official kickoff and vote, even though now I understand that some of these are gonna start probably before the actual fiscal year begins next July one. But again, I, I, I would say, I would say, this is our first, this is our first budget. Um, and then next year. Anyway. I, I, I think if we don't see something with this page, that talks about the fire department and the placement sander and the water storage tank and the basement, we're gonna lose people.
So the first year, we really kind of have to include two years.
I think so.
Like what's happening and what's gonna happen.
Somehow do it, and maybe that's the transition, the select board will decide that's a transition that they want.
Yeah.
And the following year, we, we have them.
We talked about presenting about information, do that, let them decide.
This being transitioned, and it may take a couple of years of transition, but, so the taxpayers understand where there are other, other capital projects that will be ongoing. And here, here they are, and this is why they were actually in twenty-five, not twenty-six.
This, this first year.
That's a, a really important discussion point, Thursday night, I think.
Um, I didn't leave like a minute.
That, honestly, I.
I didn't want like, we have to have a forum, they're like.
Yeah, yeah, we have to have a motion to adjourn.
So, those are the points that I, I thought would help set us up for success in that discussion.
Thank you all. It does.
And if you have other suggestions, please, you know, we can.
I think this is good.
I don't think we need to change, the agenda is gonna be pretty straightforward, so based on what we talked about, right, we're gonna.
You did a great job, Terry.
Well, we all worked on it. So the agenda is pretty straightforward, we're just gonna talk about our way ahead for the, I mean, let me see what you're doing. The agenda for Thursday night reads, any, cause we, uh, Corinne says, uh, called the, called order adjustment, I'll be coming. Um, general updates, capital improvement committee will review progress in creation of capital program, plan and budget. Discuss presentation of capital improvement program, should capital be incorporated into the, okay, I think we can get rid of that line. Should, should the should part, should capital budget be incorporated into the?
Yes.
We can scratch that one line from agenda.
Yep.
Uh, review policies and procedures, which I think, I think we could still get through that, if it's on there, at least we could discuss it.
Okay.
Uh, approval, contingency reserve fund article to be included in, which is exactly what we're asking for.
Okay. So, the one line item, and then we'll have the updated document to attach.
Uh, and what, yeah, what, if there are any other appendices or whatever, but yeah.
So I'll go off of what's on that document from the appendices.
Uh, yep.
At the bottom, yeah, to include.
Yeah.
I think that, that sets us up, sets us up as best we reasonably can for this discussion on Thursday night. And right now, I think Carl, Claire.
Joe is gonna be there, Tim's gonna zoom in. I, I don't think Harry will be there.
Right. Yeah, Harry said he couldn't make it.
Yeah.
Anything?
Spend two minutes, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any second?
Make a second. Thank you all so much. See you Thursday. I'll be there, I'll be.
Be safe, thank you.